You guys good? Okay, communication from the mayor? Uh, oh, the Councilorship Club extended their gratitude for the support they were giving from Derby. Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to discussion on communication from the public. Number one.
Number one, request from Elizabeth Meroe, coordinator of IPAC, a nonprofit organization to hold a 5K fundraiser and on Saturday, September 9, 2023, 9:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. along the waterfront, also requesting assistance of the Dunkirk Police Department.
Any discussion, council? Are you hearing number two? I'm sorry, number two?
Request from the Dunkirk City School District for police coverage for the Dunkirk Senior High School of 2023 varsity football team on September 1st and 8th, October 6th and 20th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Arrival time and the discretion of the Dunkirk Police Department.
Any discussion, council?
There might not be if you don't do their homework.
Chief, no problem. Yeah, this is the first of the DPA, yeah, and I'll get it taken care of.
Thank you.
Number two, request from Adrian Metcalf landed on and around his house.
Any discussion, council?
Okay, number six. Number six, notice of claim from Christine De Jesus of 250 Townsend Street for damages caused to her attire allegedly due to hitting a model on West Peak Street.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, is that Randy, is that the same one that we already had, one claim on a crier children on the side of the road? From the high school?
I believe it is. Same thing, yeah, same thing. Exactly the same thing.
Thank you.
So then we're done with the, uh, communication. Right. Okay, let's go to report of standing committees, boards and commissions, councilman, let's go here. Councilmember Montz.
Randy, do you have any idea what we're gonna do after you come up with all that and all that?
Over all week, we wanna get that done before the DPW weekend, this weekend. So, uh, today, and the mayor's office, and over time, we did, uh, we did a lot out there that was, um, quite unique. Certainly, if not as far as, you know, like, just follow the path of, of treaty, or, could award, or beer.
Thank you.
We did do some part of it, so it was, coming down slowly. It started getting up though.
They did a groundless job, and they from the, where I got stopped, and they go to work at the morning.
Anything? And anything else, councilman? Okay. Councilman's what? That's me. Councilman Nichols. I don't have either. Unfinished business.
I had no unfinished business, sir.
Okay. Discussion of prefiled resolutions, number forty-seven.
Resolution authorizing employee assistance program contract badly service of the Dr. Regent Incorporated.
Any discussion, council?
I mean, she's curious about the program. I mean, I wasn't, is it to help employees and employers solve disputes before they happen? I wasn't really sure. About that.
Yes. Uh, so the employee assistance program is, um, a voluntary or involuntary program that can help any of our associates if they're having, uh, mental health issues, just going through divorce, going through a situation, um, these services are available to them. There's also legal consultation, um, so this is something that if we feel that someone could benefit from it, or if, uh, if, uh, an employee thinks that they could benefit, it's a, it's a service that we offer for them.
Okay. Um, so you think it's something that will help them become, you know, stronger employees and not take us much time off? Kind of?
Correct, yeah, there are lots of benefits to the program. Um, it could help with their home life, which of course, you know, translates to being better employees and things like that, so definitely a good program. Um, and this is the one that we have been, same, same service that we have been using for quite a while now.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, chief.
Yeah, and that is a program that they're already paying into, so you're just extending the services?
Oh, they actually, our associates do not pay into it. It's, uh, it's a service that we offer our associates.
Okay. It just says that, uh, above will come from account so-and-so from personnel department employee services on the bottom line of the resolution.
Yes, so that is part of the, uh, personnel department's budget for the year.
Thank you.
Councilman, we've had this program for long.
Yes.
Especially benefits our first responders, part of our officer wellness program, and like, keep it well for debriefing incidents and things that we see you do each and every day, and it is mandated by New York City that we offer those to our first responders, so thank you very much for having this program.
He agrees very strongly.
I just wanna make sure everybody knows where it's being.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
If you're alive and heard, uh, this by design.
You're good. Okay, forty-eight, resolution authorizing sale of papers, train cars, or this kind of residence. Any special comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Hold on, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm the last one on there. I don't know who, Michael got my email where it's got the, um, for the vidim one, the last line of her description. It says $100 and zero cents, but then in parentheses, it's got $50.
Yeah, we fixed that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we sent that out.
Okay.
Thank you for finding that, and we treat, we're treating it as a typo if we can.
Right, that's okay.
Not as an amendment.
I just questioned.
No, appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
I was just wondering why so cheap, and are these citizens already keeping these areas up? Are they demonstrating the upkeep?
Yeah, for the, you know, so it's an interesting thing, but most part, uh, they are, I mean, paying them, but if they choose not to, then we've gotta send the DPW out for them, so there's huge benefits to, uh, making these transfers, and I think Mr. Woodbury could maybe speak a little bit more to that, but, um, you know, this has been a long ongoing process, uh, to try to get this done, and we do believe that it's a benefit to the city, uh, we then don't have to maintain these parcels, and some of them are quite small.
Totally agree, and then we don't lose anything with this, we only gain, because in the, uh, uh, as a condition, we reserve the right to use this for an easement, or water line, or sewer line, or something like that, so that, that would be the only reason we would wanna keep these, um, as long as we reserve that right and let the property owner maintain it, we don't have to go in there and cut trees and things like that that are hard to get to, and the property owner gets a little more land, the successor gets to assess it, and everybody's happy.
So, oh, it's gonna be assessed?
And then just add a little bit more to that, two of the families there, that property that they are both purchasing were back in from 1825 in the family as it was, but as the generations went on, the parcels got sold because they didn't need it for farming and gardening and everything, so now they're purchasing it back, so that they have their initial, um, homeland from 1825.
And just wanna thank, uh, Erica Monson for her help with that, and also, uh, Kate, put some time out for it, so, thank you.
Great.
(audio cuts out)
Yeah, my brother.
My brother. My brother is gonna burn all his, uh, brush. Yeah, I don't hear good.
(audio cuts out)
You know, there's a (audio cuts out). That's the streets, Jeff. (audio cuts out). It's a state of (audio cuts out). Everybody's (audio cuts out). I don't want that fight between, uh, Jason and (audio cuts out). I think that, brother. My family's in town. I'll poke out.
X is 12, guys, we're good. All right, council ready?
Huh?
Call the order of the regular meeting of August 15th, 2023, at 5:42 PM.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, certification of prior meeting.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting on Monday, July 31st, 2023, was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. Pursuant to section 10, 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect, in witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and the seal of the city of Dunkirk, New York, is 15th day of August, 2023.
Can I have a motion, uh, for a resolution dispensing with the reading of the minutes?
Come on.
Got a motion by Nichols and a second by Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Aye, carried. Privilege of the floor.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case each individual appearing shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing a group, who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the chair may determine in their discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. The privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public and shall be limited to subject matter relating to local law, resolutions, ordinances, and motions appearing on the agenda. The chair shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or are slanderous or non-germane. The time limit shall be strictly adhered to, except that a chair may allow any person to complete a statement or thought started before such time expires, and a longer time may be allowed by the chair with approval of a majority of the council.
Okay, privilege of the floor is now open, if anyone would like to speak. It going once, twice, three times, looks close. Okay. Communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages, mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let the council know that the Conservation Club had, uh, sent a nice thank you note to the city for the support they received during their Walleye Derby.
Okay, and we got an announcement of appointment?
Um, announcing the appointment of Dunkirk City resident Lillian Devine to the Dunkirk Housing Authority Board due to the resignation of Richard Goodman.
Okay, and I'm just assuming, uh, Mr. Bob Sanchez to receive and file on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, communication from the public and petitions. Number one?
Request from Elizabeth Naraway, Coordinator of Impact, a nonprofit organization, to hold a 5K fundraiser on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, from 9:00 AM until 11:30 AM along the waterfront, also requesting the assistance of the Dunkirk Police Department.
Any discussion, council?
Any problem today?
Okay. All right, thank you. I need a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as, uh, appropriate subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions. I got a motion by Stoyle and a second by Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Aye, carried. Number two.
Request from the Dunkirk City School District for police coverage at, for the Dunkirk Senior High School, 2023 varsity football season on September 1st and 8th, and October 6th and 12th, 20th, from 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM, arrival time at the discretion of the DPD.
Any discussion, council? Can I have a motion to refer to the PBA? I got a motion by Bemanto and a second by Nichols.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number three, request from Dana Corwin on behalf of the Walk to End Alzheimer's Association to host a 2023 Walk to End Alzheimer's event on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, at the Brooks Pavilion at Point Grashit, with registration opening at 10:00 AM. Also requesting to host a Buns Drive at the Lower Pavilion at Point Grashit on Sunday, August 27th, 23, 2023, from 2:00 PM until 5:00 PM.
Any discussion, council? Now, I need a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
Same old.
I got a motion by Councilman Bemanto and a second by Councilwoman Luskoviac.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number four, notice of claim from Esmeralda Plaza of 413 Washington Avenue for damages caused to her vehicle allegedly due to a large branch that fell during the recent storm.
Any discussion, council? Now, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments? Motion by Stoyle, second by Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Aye, carried. Number five?
Notice of claim from James Lajuski of 10 North Gazelle Street for damages caused to his roof allegedly due to a tree limb that broke and landed on and around his house.
Any discussion, council? Again, can I have a motion to get to the appropriate departments? Councilwoman, councilwomen, Luskoviac and Nichols.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number six, notice of claim from Christine de Jesus of 250 Townsend Street for damages caused to her tire allegedly due to hitting a pothole on West 6th Street.
Any discussion, council? Now, can I have a motion to refer to legal? I got Bemanto with a second and by Nichols.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilwoman Luskoviac?
Yes, um, Economic Development Committee meetings will commence again, the first being Monday, September 6th, at 4:00 PM in the mayor's conference room. Um, thank you to all that have lost veteran banners due to the storm. Thank you for your patience. Please know they are back up, with most being on Central Avenue. Thank you, Jason and his crew from Parks, for their diligent, hard work on this project. I would like to speak about the efforts of controlling our very unsanitary seagull issue we have had in our business district forever. After I generated a meeting with the USDA Wildlife Services, the mayor, and a few department directors, we found out we were not the only municipality with this problem, and there was a solution. With the mayor's blessing and cohesion of business owners, the DPW, and especially Glenn Christner, our director of building and zoning, we were able to make, um, the solution a reality, and, uh, just for everybody's information, it was paid for by the business owners and not citizen taxpayers, and the business owners are very happy about this, too. Bird scooters. I'm sure everyone notices the difference between management of last year and this year. What a disappointment, even though the weather is no help this summer. But I personally complained on the Bird app, and I know Vince has emailed the manager about that program this year. Um, Randy, um, there is brush pickup this week in the neighborhoods, finally following the storm?
Yeah, I wouldn't say finally, we've been working all along, ever since the big storm. It just takes a long time to pick up after a big storm like that. Uh, we had one manager, uh, who was on vacation a little bit west of here, and as storm system passed through, and the National Weather Service said there was a tornado within that combination, they called it a thunderstorm complex. We definitely were at the nexus of a thunderstorm complex, and if you trace all of the downed trees that came through city line to city line, it sure had the effect, it was tornado-like. Um, so, we're responding to that continuously. Uh, we have the beach bash that's coming up this weekend. We, that usually takes place in the parking, in the area that's gonna be a parking lot down by the first ward. We're gonna let them have the beach bash, then we're gonna, we're gonna clean up all the trees before that, and then we're gonna start on that parking lot.
Awesome. Thank you so much for all of your efforts, much appreciated. And about, have the LE, I knew we're expecting LED lights, have they arrived yet? I've got a list, I'm sure you do, too.
Uh, LED lights throughout the city are up and working well. We have a 10-year guarantee from the excellent company that's done that with the mayor negotiated, and, uh, we, when they're out, they promise to fix them fairly rapidly, so let, uh, DPW know of the locations, and then we have a communication with them. Been a couple hiccups in the time period of getting them done, but we think that's gonna, we're gonna work that out. Uh, there were some storm damaged lights that would be apart from this guarantee, so we would make an insurance claim for those and make sure that we can get reimbursed for, like, damage, I understand there's some damaged lights at the stadium, things like that, that would be covered by insurance.
Okay, I, I have given a list to Mike LeFition, I, I will again. Thank you. And, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bemanto?
Al, do you have an update on that property that we discussed earlier about?
I believe it's the one you mentioned in Point Drive North?
Yes.
Yeah, we're aware of that property, unfortunately, the owner of the property is deceased, so we're dealing with that. So, right now, we're just trying to keep the grass cut, and we did resecure the building, actually, yesterday.
Okay.
So, nobody can get in it, but until that situation works itself out, we just have to deal with it until the time comes.
Vince, you got something?
Councilman, I just wanted to give you a, a late update that I received, uh, late this afternoon, and with regard to the bird scooters. It appears that the fleet manager that was dealing with Dunkirk, it's the same one that was dealing with Fredonia, when Fredonia, um, ended their relationship with bird scooters, it seemed to have ended the relationship with the fleet manager, and, uh, it looks like there's a good potential in the next 10 days, they will be removing all the bird scooters, 'cause there isn't a viable fleet manager. Uh, the one potential solution is, is Jamestown is also looking into this, and, uh, the company, the bird scooter company is looking to, uh, to, to see, to determine if they would be willing to also manage the, a fleet here if the city of Dunkirk decides to, um, continue to pursue this, uh, bird scooter, uh, agreement. So, they, it looks like they may be removing them in the next 10 days, all of them, and it won't be available.
Well, hopefully, we can do better next year. Okay.
Tell him. Okay, thank you. Councilman Stoyle?
Once again, my favorite subject, drugs. David, again, thank you, you and your teams. I left out the state police last time, but all of you, anybody that you work with, thank you. And the reason I'm gonna hammer on this until it stops, if, if we can, we're being written about nationally. This city is being written, what a, what a nice place to be and the potential to come here. Wouldn't it be nice if those, uh, articles could say it's a drug-free area? And I believe, I'm talking with Dave earlier, I, I believe we were voted one of the safest cities, uh, what, last year or the year before?
Year before.
So, when people are telling the radio, when people are telling this, that we, we need public safety and infrastructure, there's been more fire hydrants, more pipe laid in this city in the last couple of years than there has been in many, many years. So, thank you again, Dave, and, uh, I'll talk to you next meeting, and thank you again. I'm done.
Councilwoman Nichols?
Yes. Randy, I did, last week, I did give you a list of, um, streetlights that were out, and I know we had some issues with the company that they were coming in. know we had some issues with the company that they were coming in, and that is going to be addressed. I know Mike LeVishian did a talk with them on how soon they could get out to do the replacement of the lights.
The company that initiated the changeover is, as a contractor to handle the maintenance of that, Ferguson Electric, they also do subcontract work to National Grid, they're well-known, they're gearing up to be able to respond more quickly, they have identified the type of parts they need to have in stock, so working with Mike LeVishian, who's one of two master electricians on the DPW staff, we're going to get these things fixed correctly and fixed rapidly.
Okay, because I know there's one on Townsend that's been out for two months, and then between Albany and Swan, that has been out for over a year, it's not, they're not replacing at all, it wasn't even touched with the new LEDs.
Right, the one on Albany and Swan was an oversight, and it's still the high-pressure sodium, that'll be changed to LED and work correctly fairly soon.
Thank you. As Natalie alluded to, the brush collection, our guys are still working on filling potholes and collecting brush, and we do have a brush collection, general brush collection for the city of Dunkirk in September. What we're having right now is people that have left out brush too, that was, since we didn't have a July brush pickup, and thus being said, Randy had the inner thoughts that we usually have a bad rainstorm, snowstorm, whatever, in July, windstorm, and it takes down an immense amount of trees, but people just put brush out at the curb, so our guys are picking up the old stuff as well as the freshly taken down ones from the storm. And I just want to ask Randy if there is an update on when the paving is going to be starting, I know the guys have been doing a fabulous job on the pothole filling.
We met with a contractor who's bid you accepted last time, Olson and Sons, and they are going to start a week from yesterday.
Thank you. Vince, it's wonderful news to hear about those scooters, I'm so tired of hearing people call me that they're on their front yard, they're leaning up against a fire hydrant, they're all over the city, it's just, it's terrible, and it's not been any better, I just am hoping if that happens, that we can get a different wording in a contract if they do come back. They're being used, but they're also being abused, the situation is out of control.
I think with an effective fleet manager.
Yeah.
That could manage it.
Right.
It could be a very useful means of transportation for, you know.
You know, I know Andy did a wonderful job last year, and he has some local help doing it, and I don't know if this man is looking for local help or not, or if he just can't find it.
Yeah, you're going to have to get the one off your front lawn, mayor.
Yes, the one that's stuck in his bushes?
Yeah.
I have a concern, and I think Allen might be able to answer it. As I'm driving through the city, I've noticed between the sidewalk and the street, there's a multitude of either real estate signs, party bouncers, and job opportunity signs, and now we're even seeing political signs, is there not a ruling in the city of where to put these signs?
Yeah, they shouldn't be in the public right of way between the street and the sidewalk, so we'll certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, they're all over, I mean, it just, if one does it, everybody's doing it, and I just, and I know, I did talk to Tim Abbey today about the Dunkirk athlete ones, that they're, they were putting them between the sidewalk and the street, and he thanked me very much, because he was not aware of that as well.
It should be on the private property side.
Well, it's from the sidewalk to the street, but it's at every school that was there, so if people are seeing that, they're thinking they can do it, as long as the school's doing it, they're thinking they can do it as well.
We'll take that on.
Thank you. And we had a wonderful year at summer camp this year for our kids, there were over 275 kids that participated in our five-week program. They are, it's wonderful to see the older kids there teaching the first and second year kids going to camp how to tie dye. They're really very creative, the little kids love it, and hopefully maybe next year we can extend it to a six-week program, it's just, it's beyond doing it, and we offer it to our Dunkirk kids, and we have sign up for honest city students, and it's just, it's a great, great, Ryan Hall did a fabulous job with his crew, it's remarkable. I think that's it.
Mayor, hello?
Thank God, right?
Thank you. Mayor, do you have anything to share on anything recent going on with the hospital? I've been getting some phone calls and texts on that, if there's any movement.
That you've heard back from, from either the governor's office or anything through the hospital themselves?
The only thing I could share at this point is that I have personally been in touch with the governor's Western New York director, who's assured me the governor's aware of the situation, and the issue is with the plan that was presented, and it has been, that's been the issue right along, so it has nothing to do with location or anything like that.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on, unfinished, I'm sorry, go ahead, chief.
I can have one minute.
Sure.
I just want to compliment, two weeks ago we had a softball tournament here on Fifth and Sixth, we had 40 softball teams in this community, it was amazing, I was down there myself, my, our guys down there as well, the compliments that came back about how that tournament was run, the amount of people that were down there, we had zero problems down there, my hats off to Corey Allstrom, to our DPW, Parks, and rec people, these people want to come back here again next year for just as many, if not more, teams to this community, so what a great weekend for our community for that softball tournament. My thanks to everyone.
Thank you, chief.
I have one more announcement that I promised Tim Gattoka I would make. I was getting phone calls about the logs that are on Lucas Avenue and how people could get them, and I talked to Tim today, and he said if you call his number, 716-366-4411, that he has a list that he's drawing up for people that do want the wood, the logs, and everything else, you're on a call list, leave your number and name, and Tim will get back to you. It is, if you want them, you load them, our city guys will not be doing that. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on, unfinished business?
None, sir.
Prefiled Resolution Number 47.
Resolution authorizing employee assistance program, contract, family service of the Chautauqua Region Incorporated.
Any discussion, council? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico.
Aye, carry.
Number 48, resolution authorizing sale of paper street parcels to city residents.
Any discussion, council?
No, it's just wonderful that after the length of time it's taken to have this done, that it is actually happening. Thank you.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico.
Aye, carry.
Number 49.
Resolution authorizing development department to employ means to design and provide a suitable, visually appropriate protective enclosure to sculptor Peter Wolf Tots, fabulous carving, Angue Onwe, or the Whispering Giant.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, there is going to be some adjustment on the second whereas, when we do the, for the resolution, the resolved, for the grant, so that we're finding the monies to create the protective enclosure, as we discussed before in the workshop.
Right, so just a question, Councilmember Nichols, are you asking if there should be a modification to that resolved?
Well, yes, because if it's going to take a grant to find the money, who's going to look for the grant, how long is the grant going to take? We need to do this and move on this structure as soon as we can, instead of using plywood or a tarp, as we have in the past few years.
Right, I think the way that was drafted, I mean, we're asking Mr. DeJoy and his department to pursue that possibility, but we're really looking wherever we can.
It says it's contingent upon grants acquired through.
Hold on a second, you're correct, but as we discussed in the workshop, first and foremost, the most important thing we need to do is get a design so we know what we're talking about.
Correct.
Then we can start looking for money.
Correct.
But we need to move, as I reached out to the mayor, we need to get this design done first.
Exactly, yes.
So even if we have to modify this down the road and figure out how we're going to pay for it, once we know what it is, then we can move forward.
Right, so it's moving in so that our architect, in-house architect, can create some kind of a drawing to give us a format of how much money it's going to cost to build it. Right.
Correct. Any other discussion?
No.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico.
Aye, carry.
New business?
We have no new business, sir.
Okay, the second privilege of the floor? Clerk, if you.
Yes, sir.
If you feel again.
The second privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public to speak on any subject pertinent to the affairs of city government. The clerk shall have the duty of maintaining the three-minute time limits for individuals and the five-minute time limit for groups, and the chair may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Time limit specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that the chair may be allowed to, allowed any person to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired as long, and a longer time may be allowed by the chair with approval of a majority of the council.
Okay, second privilege, floor is now open. Hello, please state your name.
Robert May, 102 Fraser Street, and I'm just giving an update on the railroad crossing petition, I'm going to start collecting the petitions, the goal was to reach 500, and with the help of a few signatures in here that I'm hoping for, including Mayor Rosa, we'll meet and exceed that 500, so I think that hats off to the community, everybody that signed this was very interested in the railroad crossings, especially on Route 60, a few of the people in here that have signed it tonight were really excited about us trying to do something in reference to that. So I'm ready to be moving into the next phase, which would be working with Randy and Mr. Bobstein in reference to the cover letter, going to the different representations and circulate that, and hopefully that second phase will get us closer to resolution or some plans for repair and removal of the railroad transitions that are no longer in use, and the ones that are, get the proper railroad crossing, that's one of the things we're going to go for also, is it's, they've been repaired in the past, but they've never been done right, and there are different grades of crossings, and the crossings that we have are just a little over average, so we need to get that done and get the crossings that will be able to handle the traffic that crosses, especially on Route 60. So if I could, I'd like to pass the clipboard boards in two directions and get signatures, anybody that hasn't signed?
I signed.
Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work and your dedication and determination.
Yes.
I know.
No problem.
Okay, anyone else like to speak? Going once, going twice, okay, three times, the privilege of the floor is now closed. Can I have a motion for an executive session?
So moved.
Hold on. Discussions regarding proposed, pending, or currently litigation, I got a motion by Stoyls and a second by Nichols. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico.
Carry.
There will be no discussion or business following the executive session.
So can we adjourn?
We're adjourned.